They seem to listen. They really do, I see. They wake them up and go.
There's only Board of Appeals that will hold this open session, and it's subject to being videotaped. In fact, it is being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay. The first item on the agenda is to reopen a public hearing for substantial modifications to the comprehensive permit for 58 South Street. Now, I know you've had some issues, and I see there may be some more here on the table, so...
So, Madam Chair, the applicant submitted revised plans My copy's too small. And a letter from counsel which brings up some issues. So, the letter from counsel essentially says that, as you may recall, the Board wants to see a condominium association to have more protection with regard to the creative ways that the lots have been designed. So, the applicant's counsel is claiming in a letter of March 6, 2020, that requiring a condominium association would make the project uneconomic. And so, therefore, that opens the door for this Board to request pro forma and go through a financial analysis under 56056.
Do you have anything?
Madam Chair, I can address that. Paul Habey, Blatman, Deverski, Habey representing the applicants. I would actually disagree with that statement. Generally, if you're talking about an original application, if the Board issues a draft decision and the applicant believes that that draft decision would render the project uneconomic, then the Board would have the right to request the submission of pro forma and have the right to do a review of that pro forma. In this instance, we're not talking about the issuance of the draft decision. We're talking about a request for a modification. And there is HAC case law that states that the applicant is not required to show that the request for the modification renders the project or that the project is uneconomic as part of that request for the modification. That's only required once you get to the Housing Appeals Committee if there is an appeal.
Now, you've succeeded in confusing me. I agree with you, it's not that difficult. But as part of the modification, you're changing the nature of ownership of the property.
Yes.
I mean, this is a major modification. Would you agree to that?
I don't necessarily agree to that solely on that issue. I mean, the difference between a condominium form of ownership and a single-family form of homeownership isn't really that significant as it plays out in real life. I do recognize that there is greater ability for a condominium association to police the membership that a homeowners association has, and I recognize that as a legitimate concern for the Board to have. You know, with a condominium association, you have the right to actually place a lien upon one of the units if they're failing to comply with the rules and requirements, if they're behind in their fees or things of that nature, whereas homeowners association doesn't have that same statutory protection.
In fact, do the homeowners have to be a part of the homeowners association?
Well, they would.
Legally, are they required to be?
They would be required to be part of the homeowners association as part of the deed instruments. That would be part of...
So, by deed restriction, they would be required to... You can do that?
You can do that. And we would certainly be willing to work with the Board and have the Board have oversight and approval over the homeowners association documents so that you could ensure that you would have the ability to police this project to the way that you are intending to. I mean, you also have the ability to do that through the conditions that you impose. The town certainly... If an applicant is not in compliance or a homeowner is not in compliance with the conditions of a comprehensive permit decision, that's a zoning violation. You have the zoning power to take action to enforce it.
If the Board feels in its infinite wisdom that a condominium association is a better form of ownership for the town of Berlin for the perpetuity, explain to me why... Because we approved that last time, that kind of ownership. Explain to me why this wouldn't work in this instance.
This wouldn't work because the DEP has already ruled that this cannot be done as a condominium project. They have determined that if this is a condominium...
I don't think they've said that it can't be a condominium association.
Well, it's not feasible to do because they would deem it to be a public water supply. And that public water supply has a great deal... And Seth can speak to that issue more so than I can, but there's a lot more requirements and regulations with regards to public water supplies, and it's a much more expensive process.
Have you submitted these new plans to DEP and asked them if they would approve of this form?
I can let Seth answer that question, but I think it's a little bit premature because they haven't been approved yet.
Why would it be premature, given that you've been refused in the past?
Because we don't have an approval for this layout just yet.
I understand, but I mean, wouldn't it make sense?
I think, Seth, you can certainly speak to this, but I think that the discussions that were had with DEP...
You see, we're here because we did it in that order before, okay?
Yes.
And given that there has been a refusal in the past, wouldn't it make sense and wouldn't it give credence to your position if you were to go to DEP and they said this is fine?
Well, certainly, any approval of the requested modification could be conditioned upon DEP approving the water supply. It's necessary. We can't go forward and actually start the project.
But if they said no, then we'd be back to square one and we'd be holding another hearing.
Except for where... Well, I don't know where we would be if that happened because right now, what we are proposing would not be considered to be a public water supply because each lot would be an individual lot with its own lot.
I hear what you're saying. Do you hear what I'm saying?
Well, I hear what you're saying in the sense that you're suggesting you would like to see us get pre-approved by DEP before moving forward on this.
Doesn't that make sense? I mean, that protects you, that protects us.
DEP won't do that.
The DEP won't do that?
If I can just add in, the back history, and I'll keep it real brief on this. The way the wells were originally configured on the project that you approved, which is following, and it's just like we're looking at here, is completely consistent with all the prior comprehensive permits that you guys have done. If you look at Dudley Road, Green Acres...
Well, I don't think we're dealing with now the present. And I, you know, I'm sure in 1920, they did things a lot different, too.
This wasn't that long ago.
I understand. And it wasn't built the way it was planned out in the first place. So, that being said, let's deal with just this one.
So, DEP, as you're aware, made the ruling that they would consider this a public water supply. If wells are in an individual lot and each house has its own well, like we're proposing, it would not be a public water supply. It's the way most houses in this town have a well. And that would be subject to certain Board of Health setbacks, and we're meeting those all to the perimeter of our property. And then we have asked for a waiver for the interior, and that was subject to your last peer review. And they said that those waivers can be granted without any risk to human health. So, that's how we got to where we are now. So, in short, DEP's ruling wouldn't even... They wouldn't have to look at this because it's in full compliance with what a private water supply well is required to be. It's an individual lot, each house has its own well.
So, then it could be actually approved locally rather than going to DEP?
Correct.
But at the same time, one of the things we're trying to do is to protect the neighborhood. This is a much more dense location than most of them. In protecting both the people who purchase these homes and their neighbors, it's quite a strange configuration, you'd have to agree. And it uses, what is it, AIE technology or is that...
Well, innovative alternative technology. We talked about it.
Right. We've had that discussion, but that would require testing once a year. And one of the concerns we have is for the low and moderate income housing because that test would cost $400 to $600 a year to be done. And if it's a condominium, it could be in the condominium fees and could be spread across...
That fee also goes to mass housing.
I'm sorry. Slower and a little louder.
The fee for what they have to pay for everything goes into the mass housing calculation. So, that affects how much they can purchase the home for, so therefore, they have the money to do so, to take care of that. The state monitors that.
So, the purchase price of the affordable units is reduced to account for whatever the... If it was a condominium and there are condo fees, the purchase price would be different to account for those condo fees.
And the same for homeowners association fees.
But we're looking for like a level of authority in between the homeowner and the town in order to see that that testing was done, was done in a timely fashion.
It has to be done or they report back that the town has to...
So, I think that there are two separate issues here. What is... What the town's rights are with regards to enforcing whatever the decision is. That doesn't change between a homeowners association and a condominium association. The town has the exact same rights to enforce its decision no matter how this is set up.
It's a case of responsibility, though, because we could... In one case, we could... The homeowners association, which is a much looser ownership than a condominium association, could be the funnel for the information on an annual basis.
We would still set a homeowners association up to do exactly that same thing. I mean, we could present you with homeowners association documents that are essentially identical to what a condominium association would look like. And we can certainly... We're more than happy to have that something that the Board would be subject to the Board's review in approval of those documents.
But because of this special technology, we'd like, you know, if we were to approve this, we'd like to make sure that these tests are done.
Yep, so we can certainly put that directly into the homeowners association documents.
And we don't want the burden to be on either Nishova or our local Board of Health to go chasing these people every year. If there were one entity that they could go chase, it would be much easier if there were one report every year. And quite frankly, the homeowners could probably get a better deal on having the testing done if they did it en masse.
Sure, so we could certainly agree to a condition that actually requires that to be part of the homeowners association documents and puts the onus of doing that onto the homeowners association. And then they would be required to essentially police their own membership to make sure that it's getting done. I will tell you that even with condominium associations, it can sometimes be an issue, particularly with affordable unit owners. I've been aware of multiple circumstances in which condominium associations have exercised their lien powers to foreclose affordable unit owners for not paying their dues. You know, there's no guarantee under either form of ownership that you're not going to have a recalcitrant owner and...
Couldn't the homeowners association do the same thing?
The homeowners association or the condo association could do the same thing. The only difference is that the condo association has a statutory right to actually place the lien onto the unit owner that's not paying. But sometimes, that's not enough either. What I'm saying is that the Board can certainly draft a decision that includes a condition that states that this will be the responsibility, not of the individual homeowners and lot owners, but actually the responsibility of the homeowners association. And that it will be the homeowners association's responsibility to actually ensure that each individual homeowner is complying. And if they're not, then the homeowners association as a whole is going to have to step up. And if they don't, the entire project is going to be out of compliance with the permit.
We also had concerns about the way the pipes went. I mean, some of them are 100 and 120 feet long. And some of them would be passing over other folks' property. And we were interested in making sure these... The land over the pipes was maintained, okay? And given that some of these homes that have long pipes might be low and moderate income, we have concerns... The configuration that was given before, while it is dense and we had concerns for the neighbors, we felt it was workable. I'm not sure this one is. Who's going to put the fence up? I mean, if these are all private owners that provides a privacy fence or privacy screening or mows over these pipes that pass over public properties? And while I know this can all be written into the homeowners association, I suppose it makes it much more difficult because they don't really have the same ability to deal with the individual. They could just do it and assess them.
If it was a condominium?
Exactly.
That is the advantage to it being a condominium, is that they have the statutory lien power.
It's one of many as we see it.
It really is the only difference as long as the Board and the applicant create documents that get you to the same place. The only place we really can't wringe the cap is that lien power.
I don't think any document can get it to the same place. And because the pipes have been changed and go long distances and go over other properties, there's a concern that they get maintained, that the screening be maintained, any fencing be maintained, and that the testing is done on the wells because it's using a different technology, okay?
Then all of those concerns can be placed onto the homeowners association as their responsibility.
Well, we consider part of that our responsibility to see that it happens in the most efficient manner.
I have one question. If we do peer reviews, why do we bother doing peer reviews?
If we do what, please?
We do peer reviews by professionals that you hire independently.
They had some concerns.
Why do we even do these if you just throw them in the trash?
They had some concerns.
If I could just speak to the water line. We actually gave you a table in one of the letters when we started this modification process. And the water lines as a whole are shorter length than what you approved. There was always a water line going to each individual unit. That's how they get water.
But the maintenance of those lines was going to be by condominium. Now, we have private owners that own the land. Okay, I think I've said my piece. Does anyone else have something that they'd like to ask?
Well, I think, the same issue again. The last discussion we had on this, there's a fence bounding, I guess, Lot 1A on the one side. And that was identified as a unit that will be assigned as low income or subsidized, if you want to phrase it. And under HOA, that individual is responsible... Whoever buys that house on Lot 1A is responsible for the maintenance of that fence.
They're responsible for the maintenance of their siding and their driveway, their shingles, their whole exterior, their shrubs, their lawn?
Well, but the fence is a condition of the project.
And we could certainly put something... You could put something into a draft decision. We could put something into homeowners association documents that makes maintenance of the perimeter fence the responsibility of the homeowners association rather than any one particular unit owner.
Well, and that was one of the concerns when we were told previously to suck it up initially.
That is certainly a condition that you could impose.
Do you... Have you shared with us you were going to do a draft of the master deed and so forth? Have you done that?
You have all the documents related to the private driveway maintenance from prior when we entered into this process.
But I'm talking about the other...
We don't have a master deed. I don't recall that being requested from us.
Well, if this is going to be homeownership, there won't be a master deed. Each lot will have...
There was going to be something written that was similar to the condominium association. They talked about presenting it because we asked about it, the same responsibilities of the condominium association being applied to the homeowners association. And that was going to be presented as to what the homeowners association agreement was going to look like, and we were going to see a draft of that.
I recall last meeting, nobody had much to say. And the only things requested came strictly from Amy. And we got it all those down and supplied you with everything that you requested. All this stuff, other than a master deed, can easily be part of the condition of the approval or can be drafted for your approval. But when we left, we had a very strong sense of what we were supposed to provide tonight, not reopening some of this other stuff, which...
So typically, whether it's condominium association documents or homeowners association documents, that's the sort of information that gets submitted after approval prior to commencement of construction. So certainly...
Madam Chair, in this instance, I don't think the Board would be comfortable with that. I mean, it's up to the Board, but this is a... This has been a pivotal issue since the modification was filed in the summer. So, I don't think that the Board would... I certainly wouldn't be comfortable reviewing these documents without input from the Board. Unless the hearing has closed, we cannot get input from the Board. I do have a few other questions if the Board is all done. Why does... Why do the wells have to be on common areas? Why can't the wells be part of the individual lots?
They are on individual...
They are on individual lots.
So, why can't the individual lots be individual lots and the common area be the street and the tails? The tails that the Board is concerned about, right here?
We had a plan that had the wells, the lines going through those tails. And the Board was concerned about access and concerned about buffer area. So, they had us create those access easements for the wells at the Board's request. So, we redesigned the plan to get the Board's...
So, Seth, if you could answer my question, why couldn't we... Or Paul, maybe. Why couldn't we have these 10-foot strips?
So, what you're asking is whether that could essentially be owned by the homeowners association?
No, the condominium association. I'm still on condominium. So, why can't that be part of the condominium? The general... Why can't that be part of the common area? But the rest, but the lots be the lots that are owned units. They would be units of the condominium. And then you have your wells. Another way to do it would be just like condominiums do. You know, they assign parking spaces. Why can't you assign the area around the well to that lot, to that unit?
Because it would still be considered a public water supply.
But, okay, then forget that. Go back to the single lot. If you have... Each one is on its own single lot. That lot is considered the unit of the condominium. The condominium... The common area would be the roadway and these areas right here, right here, and right here.
Can you manage one lot, one unit condominium? I don't think you can under the condominium statute.
It's 12-unit... It's a 12-unit condominium.
But they have to be on... They have to be completely separate. No, they have to be on their own lots. Otherwise, we run back into the public water supply issue.
But what I'm saying is that the home, the structure, and the well are the unit. They are the unit. They're Unit 1A, 1B, 1C. So, why can't that be the case? And then underlying are the... Is all the common areas? Because before, we were going to have four units on their own lots as the condominium.
And certainly, you could do a four-unit condominium.
So, why can't you do a 12-unit?
Because then it's essentially one condominium.
No, 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 no. Last time, there were... There were three... No, there were three or four per well.
If it's condominium, DEP is deserving the right to approve the wells.
Right, can you just answer my question from the time before?
I can't even understand your question.
Were there four... Were there four units per well or three units per well?
Four.
Okay. So, last time, what they had was they had four, 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 all separate condominium units. And then the entire thing was one. So, they had three units as a condominium.
No, but I understand what you're saying, which is essentially you have individual condominiums for each lot plus an overarching condominium for the common areas common to all of them. But again, I don't know that you can do it. I don't think you can do non-condominium, single-family home lots with a condominium essentially for common area when there's no underlying condominium. So, we're not going to have three or four separate condo lots and then a condominium overlaying that.
But you're going to have 12 individual lots with a condominium overlaying that.
Individual, single-family lots. They're not condominiums. You can't have a one-unit condominium.
So, then why can't you have the entire thing... So, well, getting back to my first question or my first point that I wanted to point out to the Board is that it says, writing the letter on page 1 in the third paragraph, it says the master deed reserves the right to evaluate and determine blah, 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 blah. So, going to Madam Chair's original question is that why can't we get something from DEP? I don't understand why we can't. The letter that's attached, I couldn't determine, but it appears to be from the old plan that showed the four units sharing one well. So, we don't... I don't know why this was attached unless to confuse because this doesn't have anything to do with the plan that we are looking at right now.
It's just to show you that if it becomes a condominium, it still doesn't work, no matter if there's twelve condominiums or...
But we need to see that in writing from DEP. We don't have that.
Not only that, but I would suggest that we need to have DEP chide in on what their suggestion would be. Because I...
Not their jurisdiction. Not their jurisdiction, the way the plan is proposed.
And then the other thing that I would like to just bring up quickly is that I do think it's important to note that the Board... This is a major modification, substantial modification. It was brought forward from the applicant as a substantial modification. And as we said from the very beginning, this Board can only consider what is being changed, what is being modified. Without a doubt, the ownership is being modified. So, it is perfectly within your review to be considering the ownership. So it is perfectly within your review to be considering the ownership. And I would disagree with regard to being allowed to look at pro formas in this instance, where it's directly related to the substantial modification. I would argue that because the substantial modification opens up a new hearing based on those modifications, and this is, this is a modification, that you guys would have the right to look at a pro forma.
One point I would like to make with you, if I might. You brought up, well, in the past, okay? And we have a history, Mr. Rhodes has done several projects in the town. And I think there might be, in the back of my mind at least, I can't speak for my colleagues, green acres, okay? We approved a plan and it did have some piping going this way, but when it was built, it was totally different than the plan that we saw.
The plan that you saw was a proposed plan and then you signed an A and R plan that showed the lots, which was the approval for the lot designation. Then we went to the board helping out the septic's approved. And then we had waivers that gave us the ability to build one out of four different types of homes that we had in any place, provided that they still met the zoning that was approved by the ZPA.
Do you know what I mean, Mr. Rhodes? The septic, the configuration of the septic and water was totally different than the plan.
No, all we added was, we added more acreage because we had the septic's connected, they never changed the way the septic's were connected because we never moved the septic sites. What we did is we added parcels that had legs off to wherever because we had to add extra acreage for the nitrogen loading and that was due to the board help in fulfilling our nitrogen loading regulations, which was unforeseen. So we did what the law required us to after the fact without you guys holding our hand.
Quite honestly, when I look at this plan, I can see, I know that this is pretty much sand in this area of town.
It's all sand.
It's all sand. So it's very good drainage. I can see that there could be made a spot, I mean, a wellhead has to have 400 feet around it. I could see where they could, you know, it might take the elimination of one of the houses.
It makes it project going by.
Eliminating one house would?
It's not eliminating one house. It's, this is the whole reason we went back to the state and we came back for a modification. The plan's been the same since the very beginning, six months ago. And, you know, we, we went through the peer review, we went through all the questions, then we went, then next thing you know, we're talking about the buffer around the outside. And last one, last one we left, you know, this, this stuff was done. But, you know, you continue to revisit it, as you do, that's what you do. So it just basically, like when hearing was closed, I says it cannot be a condo association. We didn't spend a half a year to a year's worth of engineering, attorneys, and meetings to go back to a condo association. The reason for the change was to go to a homeowners' association, eating property and individual house lots. That was the whole reason for the modification.
Okay. Geez, I'm seeing your side, but I guess like Amy is saying, we need to see some dollar signs.
Pro forma.
I'm sorry?
A pro forma.
My dollar signs are your pro forma, yes.
Yep.
And we would need to, I would need to see what it would do to the project dollar-wise if you did go to a public water source.
If you remember, one of the big things that came up with the public water supply is that there's a zone two radius that's associated with that.
400 feet around the head.
Roughly, yeah. And one of the things we brought up is that that is going to impact the abutters property. That's totally within the rules, it's totally allowed, but part of the benefit of having individual wells is that there is no impedance on the abutters properties from putting a zone two on there. So that-
Aren't you drawing from the same source?
So the zone two is a protective radius and it limits-
So it essentially would limit what they can do on their properties because they would be within-
Correct.
They've got the abutters property.
Well, I can see a corner right up here that's property owned by the town, it's not owned by any private individual. That's like fields for the soccer teams.
We, back in September, we had gone through that. So that impacts heavily three of the abutters as well as the school property.
Okay, so you're saying that if we go for the single public water supply, this is the impact?
That's correct.
But if you go for the individual ones, it's not going to be?
They don't, no. They have, they have a separate set of rules around them that do not have the prohibitive zone two associated with them.
So the same amount of water is being drawn, the difference is that that area is protected. So with, with regard to your point, having the fields, that's inconsequential.
Well, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but maybe they could chide in then.
I do have, I have a question, maybe for Amy, I'm not sure. Do we have a duty to ensure that this proposal is feasible to affordable homeowners, that it will stay an affordable unit because there's higher maintenance on it? Where if it turns out that the maintenance is higher because there's no condominium association, association taking care of the siding, the yards and all of that, is it going to, is it going to drop out of our housing stock?
The mark.
I kind of asked Amy, so I want to hear from her first, please.
So generally, we don't have much control over, over these units after they have been allowed under the comprehensive permit. However, in this circumstance, if you are concerned, I suggest that we request something in writing from Mass Housing, that they are aware that these are, you know, that these are going to require extra maintenance. You know, my, my question is, is that they're, they're stating that the purchase price is going to be reduced because of the maintenance, but what is that for one year? Is that for 10 years? Is that for 20 years? This is a, this is a yearly fee. This isn't, this isn't just a one-time thing. So, okay, we're going to knock the purchase price by $500. I, I, it would be interesting to see how they're calculating that.
Right, given that it could cost $500 a year-
Correct.
And they could live there for 10 years, are they going to knock $5, $10,000 off the price of the house?
Right. And what is that, what is the length of stay?
Right.
How do you calculate that?
So, Madam Chair, if I can clarify, the original approval was for standalone structures. So each unit owner was going to be responsible for the maintenance of their own structure already. So that's not adding any additional costs-
But the condominium fees-
The condominium fees will be essential, it's, they'll be covering the same maintenance as the homeowners' association fees are. It's just going to be a homeowners' association fee rather than a condominium.
And that's the difference. So before, each four-unit condominium had to, in their condominium documents, had to have all of this thing, you know, all of these provisions about maintenance for the wells that DEP had to-
Right.
-agree upon and all that kind of things.
And we didn't group the low and moderate income in one. It was like-
Right.
-one low and moderate and-
Correct. And so, so that was taken into account. So here, it's really not being taken into account because we don't have a condominium association. It would be under a homeowners' association that would-
Be a much looser.
Right. And we also have to rearrange.
Yeah. So our condominium associations would take care of a failed septic system for that four-unit group, whereas now each individual house is going to be responsible for their own septic system.
They end up tied to a maintenance program with the monitor, the same company that's monitoring the special technology and the pumping, all gets documented. They're in straight sand, so if they're monitored once a year, pumped on schedule, they're more likely to not fail than any other system in this whole entire town. There's more checks and balances already in place for what we have than if it was a condominium association. Condominium association only required to be inspected every three years. This stuff is inspected every one year.
So say that, say the D-Box gets crushed and needs to be replaced.
Depending on how it got crushed, it'd be, if it got crushed, there's homeowners' insurance if the truck came on, if a truck came onto the property and crushed the D-Box and you hope you get it replaced.
But there would be four units paying for it, not a single unit.
Be four units paying for it, but it would also be at a cheaper price. These systems are two trenches in the ground, 238-foot trenches in straight sand.
Well, okay, I think first of all, what sand is left, we want to see some dollars. We would like to see a pro forma.
So Madam Chair, the way the regulations work, in order to request an applicant submit a pro forma, the board first has to provide the applicant a draft decision. That includes all the-
Unless they voluntarily want to.
Which I don't know how we can submit a pro forma for a decision we don't know what will be imposed.
Well, I think you do, but, okay.
So that's what will be in all the conditions.
Is that a no to us on a pro forma, right?
It's not a no, it's, we need more information. We don't know what exactly we're trying to address here.
The information we're trying to address is if we were to authorize, or if we were to require this be a condominium, what the difference in cost is between doing it the way it's laid out here and doing it as a condominium.
So that, that doesn't require a pro forma review. If you require this to be a condominium, we cannot do this as proposed. It would require a public water supply.
We want to be as fair with the applicant as we can. You've heard our concerns.
We can't do a pro forma based on condos.
Or if we did, it would be a pro forma that showed a significant reduction in the number of units, because you can't get an approval from DEP without doing that, because they will deem it to be a public water supply.
So how many units do we have if, if they went that way?
If it went that way, we wouldn't build it, we would end up in the appeals court, and then the appeals court would rule in our favor, and then we would build it the way it is and the board would have no say over what happens.
More importantly, I think we need to have an understanding as to what it is that we're being asked. If it's simply, can you give us a narrative explaining why?
I think you know our questions. I think they've been expressed by both Amy and myself.
I'm not sure you would necessarily be satisfied if we submit to you a pro forma that shows, you know, that we can only do four units or a-
I have a sense as to what this being a public water supply would constitute.
But if we had to do this as a condominium, we can't do it as proposed. So there's going to be a significant reduction. It's not simply the difference in cost between, you know, what you can sell the units for as a homeownership as opposed to a condominium ownership.
I'll take that as a no, thank you.
Lynn, for the record, in the October hearing, we had, says, "Chairman Ryan expressed concern for maintenance of the access and utility easements and protection of the buffer zone now that there will no longer be a condominium association in place. A lengthy discussion followed. It was suggested a general covenant or homeowners' association could be written specifying responsibility for maintenance of the easements and indicating a no-cut area for each lot's buffer zone." So we did ask back in October for a draft of a homeowners' association-
We provided that to you.
But then you needed to add some things to it.
And we did that as well.
I don't remember seeing that.
I might have it working tonight if you'd like.
With regard to that strip, I think that's fairly easily addressed. And I started to suggest it earlier, which is, that could be something that could actually not be part of the individual lots. That can be deeded to the homeowners' association and homeowners, as the owner-
Which makes it a condominium, doesn't it?
No, no, but the homeowners' association itself owns the fee interest in that property and it would be their responsibility to maintain it.
It's sworn and asked, it tempts a possibility several times.
Yeah, and you told them.
It doesn't, we don't, we need all the space we need for nitrogen loading with the lots, maybe they should have been looking at.
Which is that question? This is what happens when you get bothered towards the end of the process.
We had sent over numerous of the private way maintenance agreement and-
That's it. I have the letter right here and it says, "In closing, a draft of the private way maintenance agreement."
It's not the homeowners' association agreement.
Nothing about-
What the covenants would be.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it says, it says in a screening covenant, but nothing about, no homeowners' association, no draft, no draft homeowners, that's going to resemble a condominium association. I think we all would have remembered that. I, and I'm-
And I think it was asked in more than one sitting.
Yeah, this is just, this is just the meeting minutes. I mean, I suppose we could go back and look at the video, because I believe it was videoed and see what we were asking for.
I think you see the issue I have, and that's why, one of the reasons that we're looking for condominium-type ownership, is so that those pieces that are providing buffer zones and the water pipes, sewer pipes, so that the condominium could maintain them as opposed to each individual.
I fully understand what your concerns are and I wish the response was as simple as, you know, with this to a condo. Unfortunately-
Well, no, I mean, your first inference was, well, we could make that part of the homeowners' association.
Well, I didn't realize they had nitrogen loading issues.
But then the size of the lots would be reduced, okay? So that creates a, so-
It doesn't from a zoning perspective. We could have done it, you know, this is a 40B, you can reduce size of lots pretty much as low as you want to go.
Well, some of them are on the street now.
But this has to go to, this deals with Title V, nitrogen loading issues, which is not favorable as part of the 40B process. So they're required to have that acreage available.
So what are you telling me?
I'm saying that unfortunately, you know, we won't be able to set this up so that the homeowners' association would own that strip, not because you can't do it as part of a 40B project, but because there are Title V issues that are preventing it.
Do you understand, well, no, but it's got to do with the size of the wash.
And those, those-
But it's because of-
The type of noise is a part of the law. Yeah, they need, but why can't you have an easement over them in favor of the homeowners' association?
And give the easement to the homeowners' association.
You absolutely could do that.
And require the home-
A maintenance easement.
I mean-
Well, but, yeah, it would have to be a non-maintenance agreement, because it would have to be-
Enforceable.
Yeah.
Right, so essentially-
It has to cover the cost.
But beyond that, I think you would want it to be some sort of an exclusive easement so that they, so whoever owned that property wouldn't be allowed to go in there and remove vegetation.
Yeah, and this is part of our concern, that trees start to grow over these water and/or sewer pipes on property that the people in the house in front of it don't own. Or, well, they own it, they own the land, but they have no interest in those pipes because it's not their pipes. And they would have to, in some instances, because they do own that piece of piping that goes around the outside 10 feet, and they would be required to maintain the fencing and any, any other requirements that we have to protect the neighbors. Does that make sense to you?
It does make sense, yes. I mean, again, the fencing, we're talking about perimeter to the entire site, can be, the maintenance can be placed upon the homeowners' association. I don't think we're looking at fencing in between individual lots, correct?
No, no. There's only a couple hundred feet of fencing, the rest of it is existing by their-
Well, what about the screening?
And screening.
Again, an easement could be provided to the homeowners' association that allows them to essentially have the exclusive use of that area for-
Well, they do, that's what they're going to do now. The problem is they're in house here, their well or septic is down here, and they're going to have to maintain this 10-foot strip and maybe replant trees if there's something missing for screening.
Well, right now, the septic's are all right by the house and the-
It's the water.
Excuse me?
It's the water.
The water's condensed into areas, which you had us condensing, you had us pull it out of the 10-foot strips and condense them into a couple or three areas. So therefore, it would be maintained and installed properly. That was, that was a request of the board. And we created easements for maintaining those, a request of the board.
Okay, but easements-
We also restricted that those are to be maintained as long to, in response to your concern that trees may grow.
Yes, that was going to be written into-
That was provided.
Yeah, we've done that.
But we haven't seen it, right?
Yeah, but-
What are you, what are you talking about? Each area, each lot has its own well, they're not condensed into three areas?
No, the, what he was referencing was the well lines themselves are in the easement.
The wells are all separate. There's 12 separate-
Right, but it's that 10-foot easement that they're required, you know, your house is here-
Yeah.
And this is over here. And the pipe that goes over there is on a 10-foot easement that you're supposed to maintain.
Right.
It doesn't make sense.
So we're going to have the homeowners' association pull the 10-foot strips in the well areas as part of the fee.
Is the homeowners' association required to have the same reduction in fees for the low and moderate income?
It's the same issue, so when you're talking about a condominium association, there's two ways that their condo-
I'm talking about if the home, I know the condominium association could do that.
It would be set up the same way with regards to the price of the affordable units. It's done by a formula and either the condo association fee or the homeowners' association fee would be inputted into that formula. The higher the fee, the lower the sales price. The lower the fee, the higher the sales price.
But what about the monthly maintenance fee?
That would, again, is part of the-
Part of the calculation.
The fee. So there would be an overall homeowners' association fee that would be required of each-
The bank views it like taxes, like the taxes on your property, they give, they fully affordables, they do their fee, they do their taxes, and they give them mortgage.
Tell that to the folks at Whitney Estates.
When they say they're fully managed long before their lots put in-
Well, I think we're talking about two different things here.
Yeah.
And there's two ways you can do it.
When you have a condo association with a 40B, you can do either based on square footage or you can do on your beneficial interest.
Right.
Okay? Every month, or their annual condo association fees are based on one of those. So would the homeowners' association fee also be set up that way where if a low-income unit, Unit 1A, whatever, would it have a reduced beneficial interest compared to the market rate units? And would it pay 70% of the HOA fee that the market rate units would pay every year?
We can gladly do that, that's not a problem.
So there's two options. You can essentially charge them- You can essentially charge them the same condo or homeowners association fee as every other unit. In which case, the sales price of that affordable unit is going to drop. Because one of the inputs in the calculation for the affordable sales price is how much they're paying in condo or homeowners association fees.
What if we didn't want it that way? We wanted it that they would pay it for sale.
Ultimately, it's actually an issue for the determination by the subsidizing agency. The subsidizing.
Determined by what?
The subsidizing agency. So they actually get to determine what the allowable fees would be attributable to the affordable units. So they would review that as part of the final approval process.
I think that this board is well aware of the fact that that does not happen.
They didn't have any Whitney Estates.
What about if you did a 20-foot, a 20-foot easement around the entire project? That was the responsibility of the homeowners association plus this area, this small area that's in between lot 3A, 1A, and 2A. So you have, so you have 20-foot, you have, you have a 20-foot area where you have two lines right here, the green and the blue lines. Then you have a 20-foot area here where you have orange and pink. So if you did 20 feet around the entire thing.
Mr. Rhodes just said it can't do that. Because it'll reduce the size of the lot.
No, 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 it's not.
It's not an ownership.
Not an ownership, an easement to the homeowners association that they are responsible for. So the complicating part would just be right here, right where this is not on the outside. This purple line right here would be the only complicating part. And then, and then you have that easement in favor of the homeowners association within the homeowners association documents that they are responsible for that 20 feet. And then, once that's a base, we build off of that as to what we want to see in that 20 feet or what we don't want to see in that 20 feet. And that's, and that's how we regulate.
I'm just concerned when you record a homeowners association, can you give them an easement? Can you, I mean, how do you?
You can say you draft a rights to the homeowners association. It's in the, it's in the heat on the plan, it's at the registry.
Okay. And you establish their structure? And you establish what they're responsible for? Okay? Which I think is what we were curious about for.
But we haven't seen it yet, we do need to see it.
If, if we could look at, I think it's sheet C 2.02 in the plans that we just know. One of the things you had asked us to do prior to this meeting was to make a separate easement sheet. If you bear with me while I get my full size on it.
This one here.
Yeah, so the hatched areas are what are the existing proposed easements there.
Right, so I'm saying extend it more. So go around the entire property, 20 feet, and then just do that one little easement that's not on the edge. The one that goes, the one that's behind lot 3A.
Can I come up there just so we don't have any miscommunication?
So it would be, so this is 20 feet, right? Because these are both 10?
For the purposes of discussion, that's fine.
Okay, so 20 feet all the way around, so this, that'll encompass these.
Yeah.
20 feet, 20 feet, 20 feet, 20 feet.
Or even make it 30.
20 feet, 20 feet, 20 feet. And then the only area we have that's, that we have to add in is this little strip. And this little strip, sorry, this, from here, ignore that. So you'd have to add that in also. But the home, so the homeowners association will have an easement over this plus 20 feet all around the edge, the whole thing. And that will provide screening for the abutters. Responsibility will be on the homeowners association.
And maintenance over those pipes.
And maintenance over the pipes also because the pipes will be in that area.
So, so I think, my point is that the easement plan they have before us, if we modify that, that is essentially what's being asked for now, am I correct? If you look at, if you go to your next page.
Why is this piece, Darlene?
That's the easement.
I understand, but why is it?
So you can see it.
I mean, this is narrow, this is narrow. Why is this broad?
That was the minimum area it needed to maintain those areas. Now Amy Jackson, you're asking for a larger area around the perimeter which would connect and coincide with those easements.
So some of these would remain larger and then others would be made larger.
The large ones would stay large and the small ones would become larger.
The, the large ones were in response to your initial concern that a well rig couldn't get back there, so where the wells are, the easements are much wider.
What is this structure in here?
It's the existing house.
All right, so that's, that's gone yet or not?
Yeah, no, it's, it's there now, but it's to be removed, it's labeled to be removed on one of the sheets.
What is, I can't quite read, what is the width of this current easement?
So here and here. Yeah, 2.07.
Yeah, we're in the, that's my point, we're, we're pretty close to what you're asking for, if I'm, we're talking to the.
Inch, correct.
Yeah.
What plan are you looking at? What number?
These are little ones, yeah.
2.07.
The last one.
Yeah, I'm looking at that too, mine doesn't have that. Is yours dated?
Yeah, wanna pass this over to Amy.
They just came in today. Wait, how, how can plans come in today that are dated 2/27?
Do you see that the plans that everyone should be looking at are, first off, the cover sheet has a breakdown of when everything was revised to make sure you have the right set. And then you were emailing those copies.
Yep. So why don't I, why does my C 202 look different than everybody else's?
I don't know, did you print them yourselves or did they?
Yeah, but should make them out.
It may be a problem with your printer, it's.
Just on this one plan?
The, yeah, the hatched area.
Okay, folks, where do we stand? Okay, so we've been refused a pro forma. So it would be very difficult for us to make a determination whether or not this project, if it were condominium, would be, the board would have a very difficult time determining if this configuration as a condominium would make it unethical. I mean.
Correct, I mean, things that would help would be a letter from DEP saying that it, you know, it would make it a public water supply, that they would consider a public water supply since the regs say they have the right to consider it, but we don't know if they will.
Okay.
And we don't have that.
Now, you're telling me DEP won't look at this, right? Until after we.
It doesn't meet the threshold for the public water supply.
But you said, just by making it a condominium association makes it a public water.
They do have, they do have the ability to group it with the condominiums.
Even with individual wells?
Yes, correct.
Because I'd like to hear from D, myself, I don't know how the rest of you folks feel. I mean, we're here because of an action that we took on our previous approval. And I would think it would be prudent to go to them first and say, is this bad?
We can certainly reach out to DEP and see if they will give us some feedback on that.
And also you can't have single lot condominiums. It's a futile effort.
Correct.
No, we're talking about, we're talking about the units, not the lots. We're talking about the units being condominium. That's what you're, you're claiming that if the lots, if there's no individual lots, then those wells are on common area, right? And that's what puts it into public water supply.
If they're an individual lot, then they're not a condominium.
I'm saying, but what you're saying in your letter is that they would not be on individual lots. If it was a condominium, they would not be on individual lots. They would be on common area because that's what you have right here, you say.
If it is a condominium development.
Yes, right.
You, you could have individual lots or exclusive use areas, however you wanted to set it up, as part of a condominium, but it's still a condominium.
Right, so can you, can, can we get something from DEP saying that if this is a condominium, these 12 wells are going to be considered public water supply?
We can ask them for that.
Well, they gave us that before, but if they're.
They gave it to us in a different configuration. They gave it to us when it was like four condominiums.
And I'm concerned because it says in their letter, under Mass Housings Drinking Water Regulations, yada, DEP reserves the right to evaluate and determine whether two or more wells located on commonly owned property, okay? That individually may serve less than 25 people but collectively serve more than 25. So that's the criteria they used before. But we went through all of this, we went through, going through. They also mentioned in their last one that it would also require the reduction in the number of bedrooms or something.
Uh huh, it did.
Okay? So I just don't want to go through this and then be applying for another revision.
So the difference between the last plan and this plan was there were three wells and they were most definitely shared wells. Here they're located, there would be.
Individual wells.
Individual wells, however they may be, whether, you know, exclusive use or not or on common or not. But that would be the difference that we want to hear from DEP, I think, is, okay, is this plan different enough to take it out of that?
Yeah.
And then the other thing is that I strongly suggest that we get something in writing from Mass Housing as to how they're going to calculate this reduced purchase price. It would be very helpful to have that, we have it, then we have it in the file, we attach it to our decision, we make sure that it's.
Well, I don't want these folks to run into the problem that the poor folks down at Whitney ran into.
Correct.
Okay.
It wasn't police back then whatsoever.
I can't hear you, Mr.
Said it wasn't police at all, it wasn't even a factor back then, it wasn't even in an equation that anybody had to go by. It's unfortunate that it took place back there, but we're operating like.
What we need to know is, are they going to do an adjustment upfront only? Or are they going to require that ongoing, the percentage of the homeowners association or condominium fee or whatever is a percentage of what the others are paying?
And that ends up being up to the state on how they would want to rule.
Is that what your question was to me? You want us to check with the subsidizing agency to see what their feedback would be on whether this was going to be the same homeowners association fee for all the units or whether it was going to be reduced for the affordable units?
Correct, that, plus, plus, if the purchase price is reduced because of the water testing or the septic testing, will it be reduced? Is the purchase price reduced just because of one inspection, even though it's yearly? 10 inspections, how are they going to reduce the purchase price? Because we have been told that, and we were told again tonight, that the purchase price would be reduced. So I need to know how, what, how did they figure that out?
The purchase price is reduced based upon the cost of the homeowners association or condominium fee. It's, it's a formula. So the higher the fee, the lower the purchase price.
So then we need to have a breakdown of the fee because that has to be, that schedule would have to be attached.
That's nice.
And if.
From, from Mass Housing.
And assurance.
And Mass Housing doesn't set that up.
But we'd have to have, but we'd have to have something, I know, but then they have to approve that. They have to approve the, the purchase price, so they would then, I mean, I guess, what I'm saying is, just by logic, if they're going to approve the purchase price, they have to approve the schedule, right?
Yes.
Yes, because any change, they have to be notified.
But they're not going to approve it, there's not going to be an actual final approval of that until you go through.
We want to know what the process is and what we will end up with.
Sure, we can certainly.
Will the homeowners association fees be at a percentage of the other fees? And how much of any individual fees are taken into account at the time of purchase, particularly for the water testing on an annual basis?
So we also.
I don't know that they've run into that very much because it'd have to be in a rural location.
We also need to have the homeowners association because we have to find out is the homeowner, will the homeowners association be responsible for the testing? Or will the homeowners association oversee if each individual house is tested?
And be responsible to get documentation?
Yeah.
What can they do when somebody doesn't do the testing?
So generally, you're not going to provide condominium documents or homeowners association documents during the course of the hearing process.
But in this, in this case, I really think that it's.
There's, there's an expense associated with preparing those, and you usually aren't going to prepare them until you know what.
We want to know what clauses that we're concerned about will be placed in those. And I would think that that's something that you could come up with now without a great deal of expense.
There, there's certainly an expense to it. So, so that having been said, we're willing to give you some draft documents so that you have that, but.
Do you have any question as to what we're looking for the homeowners association document to look like, contain, whatever?
I don't know that I have the full sense of what you want to see in there, but it might, I mean, I know you want us to be addressing the issues and concerns.
Okay, well, let's go through the issues we want to address. We want to address fees, what they'll be, and what they're going to be for low and moderate versus market value. And that would be monthly, annual, the water testing.
This is a water septic.
It's, it's septic testing.
Is it septic testing? I thought, okay. So the septic testing? That is required, okay, we want to know authority that they have to enforce it, do it? I mean, are you, are you going to put a clause in there that says that they do it and just assess the folks? Can a homeowners association assess the folks for that?
They, they can assess homeowners association dues. So those dues will have to incorporate the cost of that testing.
I think that this board would be most inclined to have that annual testing included in the fees.
Yes, we can certainly provide that.
Do you think a homeowners association could go on private property and do testing?
I think that they would need to have an easement, so again, that would have to be placed into the.
Yeah.
So she.
And that's why I say a authority. What authority do they have if a homeowner says, my water's fine, I don't want to test it?
Well, again, it's going to be a condition of your decision.
Condition of what?
Of any modified comprehensive.
Who enforces it and how?
The town, so you're, he's putting it back onto the town.
Yeah, see, that's what I want to take it away from.
Well, I, I don't want to put it back on the town specifically, I want to.
The town could put it in their condition that it has to be part of the homeowners association.
I, I want to point out that it's additional leverage for the town to ensure that it gets done. And it's leverage the town would have over the homeowners association to ensure that it got done because you can draft it in such a way that if any one of these homeowners is out of compliance, the entire project is. Which means that all of the homeowners are going to be.
Responsible.
Be responsible and on the hook.
On the hook for what, I guess, is what I, what would happen?
For making sure that it comes into compliance.
The town, so how does the town get it into compliance? The building inspector, the building inspector issue some kind of enforcement? Well, it's, it would be the building inspector because the, under the statute, the building inspector is the enforcing agent when there's a comprehensive permit. So the building inspector sends a cease and desist or something, an enforcement letter, it gets ignored. Then the town has to then pay me to file something in land court to seek conjunctive relief. I mean, it's, I really don't think that this board wants to.
Get into that.
Wants to take the enforcement upon itself. I think that if they are offering a strong homeowners association, then we need to have a strong homeowners association. I also don't think that this board wants me to, you know, to draft that homeowners association because I will, I can do it and you guys can sign off on it and I can, I would assume they'll be back for a modification. So I think it would behoove the applicant to submit draft, a draft of the homeowners association.
Well, this is why I'm going through those items that are of significant value. So we've got the monthly fees, what, or annual or whatever they are.
And for the roadway, things like that.
For the homeowners association.
And that ties into the Mass Housing calculation as well, so we'll get that.
Okay, and, and the unit cost if you want to. But we want to know ongoing how. But we want to know ongoing how we're going to keep the cost down for the low and moderates. Okay, the monthly or annual fees, the annual testing, we want the authority and, and the town to have some authority with the homeowners' association to be able to have them be the repository for the annual testing and bear responsibility. Because it's a lot easier, you know, in a neighborhood to go after 12 people who are a unit. And how we're going to address that if for some reason they don't, okay? The easements, how those are going to work?
So you want an easement plan, amended easement plan?
Amended easement plan that shows the buffer and the requirements. In other words, the required to maintain, um, buffer.
So you want to see amended easement plan, you also want to see essentially a draft easement?
Well, I wanted, we care about the unit costs, okay, and what's going to be, not so much what they're going to be, but what's going to be included in those. In other words, if Mass. Housing is going to say, you know, well, you take a thousand dollars off the cost of the house and you're covering this, um, annual testing, okay? The fees, what the homeowners' association or whatever are going to be, the annual testing, the authority at the homeowners' association and how we're going to hang our hat on that if someone doesn't do the testing. Can there be something written into the deed that requires them to allow the homeowners' association to do the testing if they refuse and bill them and sue them and small claims for it rather than hiring you guys, you know? The easements, okay? And what is going to be allowed on the easements? In other words, we want them to maintain the grass and not have trees growing on top of those pipes, okay? We want them to maintain the buffer. Is there anything anyone else can think of that we want in that area?
Oh, yeah, okay.
And we wanted these easements that we worked on there to be the homeowners' association responsibility so that we don't have to worry if Harry's keeping his pipes clear. If they're not on... That could be a joke, couldn't it?
Not very.
Jimmy Kimmel would have fun with that.
Yeah.
Is there anything else anyone heard this evening that I haven't mentioned other than these four things expanded?
So what are we, I'm not clear what we're asking from DEP. We're asking them to look at it as it is and if it were a condominium association, would it be considered a public water supply? Is that what we're asking?
That, that's what I, that's what I thought we were...
As 12 lots?
No, as, as a condominium association, not separate lots, as one lot. So then they would be, they would be in a common area.
I thought there was also a question if they were individual lots with individual sections.
You said you weren't going to do that.
No, that's what I proposed to do.
I think what Mark is saying is to get the feedback from DEP that our actual proposal is something that they would approve.
Right.
And then, but we also want to know about the condo.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So we can ask them for both.
So we want to know on the surface if DEP says, "Yeah, your septic and water look great", okay? Or a, I mean, we don't expect them to approve it.
Right.
We expect them to differentiate it from the previous plan you put in and say, "Yes, this would be allowable", okay?
As, as what though? As individual units or as a condo association?
As a homeowners, they're proposing a homeowners' association and they're proposing these as individual, um, fee simple lots, okay? So as such, DEP, the, when the petitioner came back to us, DEP said, when he was doing condominiums, "No, you can't do this. You need a public water supply", okay? I want to know, I would assume, and I think there's at least a couple of others, that we're not going to be back here in six months after we approve this and they go through all of their stuff and DEP turns around and says, "You can't do that. We told you last time, you got too many bedrooms." And that's one of the things that would be, how many bedrooms? Because they mentioned something about even with the public water supply, they wanted to see them reduce the number of bedrooms or something for the, for the lot to ground or s, I don't know what it was.
Right.
You think of anything else, Amy?
Yeah, but I'm trying to think what you're thinking, but that's not important. Um, no, I do not. I think that the draft homeowners' association should encompass the roadway maintenance that's already been drafted. And that roadway maintenance has, um, has a provision of screening at the very end, I recall. So that might have to change based on the new proposal.
Nope, I think we have a marching.
Can I just read back my understanding on it quick so we don't, you know, come up short on what you're asking for? A 20-foot easement around the entirety of the parcel and that's to be expanded within a couple of spots that Amy had mentioned to encompass the well areas. You're looking for us to approach DEP regarding the determination of individual lots and wells?
Yeah, and we need something in writing. I mean, you know...
I'm hoping we can do that. We, on our end, we're certainly...
We will contact DEP in writing and we'll provide a copy of that contact to the board.
Yeah, and would you send...
We can guarantee a response.
Would you send it? Well, I understand that. But if you explain to them that you've been to the indoor before and they closed it and now you're looking them to open it with this new plan and if you would please include Amy on your, um, when you send the note to them so that there's no confusion as to what was asked for and what was, okay?
Yes.
You have Amy's contact information?
I certainly do.
I guess you do, okay. You have his?
Oh, yes. Paul and I spend a lot of time together.
All right, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's quite all right, no, as long as we're being, I'm right. The Mass. Housing purchase price calculation and that's in regards to the HOA fee, how that's going to be incorporated.
What their recommendation is and so forth, right?
I don't know if we'll get a recommendation, but we can certainly provide you the calculation that's in performance with how they do it.
And we'll reach out to Mass. Housing to see.
And to be sure, what can be included? In other words, will they allow us to include, I mean, they might, we might find out.
She just did that whole list, you, you got that, right? Of what they want to see incorporated?
Yep, right. Drafts of the HOA docs and that's to incorporate the maintenance fee and how the fees are split between the low income or moderate income and the market rate units as well as how the septic testing is incorporated in that.
And the easements, what can be done on the easements?
What can be done? I have easement, easement documents and easement maintenance documents.
So it would be much better, I think, if we had it in one document?
Okay.
If we could, I mean, I understand that your easements have to be shown in the plan and things like that, but if we could have everything in one document?
Okay. I think that summarizes it all.
And then the, the homeowners' association document has to require that the, that it be subject to the chain of title of each property.
Okay.
And we would also put that as a condition.
And as these are individual units, um, we'd want the same whole account as the first round refusal type thing, right?
For the affordable units, that, that, that's on the...
Does anyone have anything else?
Mr. Minister, if I can clear your head, is Andy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
I thought one of the main...
Please stand up and give me a hand, folks.
54 South Street. I thought one of the main concerns of the board and at least one of the concerns I have is, is that this homeowners' association may not have the teeth to be able to make things happen or if they weren't a really, from a, from a, how can I say it, from a contractual or litigation perspective, may not be as strong as a homeowners' association for a condo. I thought that was one of the concerns in terms of...
It is.
But that wasn't addressed in anything that was given to these people to go find out because it sounds like if everything in the homeowners works out for you, at least in writing, you're going to accept it even though the homeowners' association may not have the teeth to make it happen. That was my question. Because that's what we started with and now we're all of a sudden all gathering around the homeowners' association with, oh, well, let's just write it in there, it'll be taken care of. But my understanding is they don't have the teeth, the homeowners do, that the condo has.
There's nothing here that says that if they write a HOA agreement that the board is going to accept that.
But they also, in their letter, they also stated that they would, they would draft a homeowners' association that's going to address all of our issues. That's why we're asking for a draft, to make sure that we have a homeowners' association document with teeth.
Well, we would look at whatever they produce and decide if that's adequate for each member of the board or not. But the fact that they produce something doesn't mean that we have to accept it.
That wasn't my point, I think, I'm not communicating very well, but if they had everything written to the teeth that you had asked for, but the homeowners' association really doesn't have the teeth, that a condo association has to enforce those things that you agreed to.
Well, I'm hearing from Amy that if it's a deed restriction, okay, we would. I, I have some concerns about homeowners' association, not unlike your own.
Could I ask then for you, maybe for Dr. Herd, to let's get that clarified?
Amy is addressing you.
Well, I'm addressing you, I don't know if I can address her, I don't know how it works.
Absolutely, go for it.
Okay, that we verify that there's enough teeth in a homeowners' association or even in the past if they're able to make these agreements, make it happen. For example, I'm going to be someone abutting and if I have a problem, if I went to a condo association, I might have a certain response. If I go to a homeowner's, I might, what kind of response? It depends, where's the law on this? Homeowners versus condo, which is stronger?
A condominium association is much stronger.
Then why are we considering homeowners' association and all this conversation and putting everything in there you want, but they're not as strong as a, as a condo? I mean, why would we do that?
Because they're claiming it's, it's, would make the project uneconomical.
Well, that's, I mean, come on, I'm not worried about economics. I'm worried about what's the right thing to do for this town and for the people in the town. Nowhere it's economical for someone to do the build.
Well, no, I thought it was the public water supply was the uneconomical part.
Correct, so, and we are going to get information on that from DEP hopefully.
So there, there is a possibility that it could be a condominium association under this plan?
If DEP allows it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question better?
Well, it would, but they're not going off looking at condo association at all. They're going off looking at...
It is one of the things that they, that we asked for was to have DEP determine whether they would consider it a public water supply under the current plan as a condominium.
Okay, for what, all I'm saying is, all I'm hearing is, we're going with this homeowners' association because it's not economical to do as a condo for whatever reason. And the board seems to be just saying, "Oh, let's put it all in there." And I'm saying, timeout. He stated that condo association is much stronger from a litigation perspective than the homeowners. And I'm saying, from a town perspective, from my own perspective, I'm not so sure we should satisfy ourselves with homeowners just because it's going to make it more money for whoever's doing the building. That's all I...
Could we ask them to post a bond?
The, the whole point of having them submit a homeowners' association documents to this board is that a condominium association is much stronger pursuant to the statute. The statute gives condominium associations certain rights and enforcement powers.
And requirements.
And requirements. So I don't see why a homeowners' association document couldn't do similar things. So in a, in a condominium, in a condominium document, you don't necessarily list all of the powers of a condominium association because it's in the statute. Here in the homeowners' association, what if we listed all of those and they had that power to do that? That's what we want to see. We want to see, because their letter specifically states that the applicant proposes rules and regulations that would have been contained in the condominium documents be part of a neighborhood homeowners' association. So show us that you can...
What we want them to add to that is what's in the statute.
Right, so, but show us that you can come up with a homeowners', a homeowners' association document that is satisfactory as a, as a condo would be to you guys, as satisfactory.
And is enforceable.
Enforceable, that's, that would be part of your satisfaction.
And that is, that's still sort of Plan B if it can't be a condominium association because of the public water supply.
Correct.
Well, I'm disappointed that we're not going to get a pro forma because then my heart would feel good at going with an HOA. I don't know if it is without it. I think we need something from DEP. And if we don't get something from DEP, not that they need to approve the process, but they have to say that it's viable and, and so forth for this number of units and these number of bedrooms on this piece of property as far as on...
As a condominium.
And something from Mass. Housing as to how they're going to compute things, okay? The unit price and the ongoing, in other words, what's deducted from the costs upfront and what is presumed to be at a monthly rate but reduced for low and moderates.
Just to clarify, that, that's not how the process works. So the, the sales price for the affordable units is based upon a formula. One of the inputs for that formula is whatever the condo fees or the homeowners' association fees are.
And who puts those in? You?
Those are provided by the applicants. They're reviewed and approved by the subsidizing agency.
So what if you don't, what if...
That's what they're asking for.
Yeah, why, so what if you don't ask for?
So we, we can provide that to the subsidizing agency.
And when you go to the housing authority, you state that these fees will be included in the homeowners' association fees?
Absolute.
So that there would be no, okay?
What I'm trying to say is that the subsidizing agency is not taking a look at and say, "Okay, so this cost is, you know, something that's going to be part of the homeowners' association fee, so we're going to reduce over here." They look at what the total homeowners' association fee is, they input that into their affordable housing, you know, calculator and determine, you know, that the homeowner, you know, not making more than, you know, 60 or 70% area median income paying, not more than 30% of their income on housing, and that is how you get to the affordable sales price. So that's what Mass. Housing will give us feedback on.
Right, but we want to know what's in that, what formula is going to be because you're going to do the formula.
Well, and that'll be part of the homeowners' association documents.
Right, and then we want to know that the fees, the monthly fees, including, we hope, the annual testing, maintenance of the green area and the screening and the fencing and the snowing and the, and the, yeah, all of that stuff. We want to know that that will be distributed in a manner where the market value are paying a certain percentage and the home, low and moderates are paying a different percentage.
So as I noted earlier, there's two different ways that can be done. You can either have the affordable unit owner pay the same amount as the market rate owners for either the condo fees or for the homeowners' fees. If you do that, then the sales price for that affordable unit is going to be lower.
Show us both.
We can certainly do that.
Show us both.
Generally, the, the applicant wants to do that, you know, the, the exact way you're asking for it to be done because it allows for a higher sales price. You do run into issues later on when you're talking about either a condo association or a homeowners' association where you have affordable unit owners who are paying less for their, you know, their dues.
I have a feeling you'll be very good at explaining the two scenarios that you're going to show us.
Sure.
But again, for myself, I don't know how the other folks feel, but I'm disappointed in not getting dollar signs. I have to see something from DEP if you have to drive in there and drag one of them out in handcuffs, okay? Because that's going to weigh very, I, I mean, on me, I don't know about the rest of folks. Because if we go through all this work, and I would hope you would want to go through Because if we go through all this work, and I would hope you would want to go through all this work, and then have something happen, okay?
We would certainly encourage DEP to respond to us. Can't force them to do it, but we're going to know that people-
Right. And whatever communication, if you share it, so we will know a valiant attempt was made. Because without these first two, I'm going condo.
Jim McNichol, one of your team, Boilstone. I'm wondering if there's a, a legal difference for the town between the condos and the homeowners association? When you've got that tight cluster, if one homeowner, if they're all individual homeowners with individual septic systems, and one fails and it's causing a problem in there, but they don't choose to fix it, is there a difference in the legal recourse for who, how to go after them to fix it, so it's not-
Yeah. A condo association could buy, a condo association could put a lien on the property, a condominium lien, under the statute.
Or maybe even vote to fix it in Jackson.
Right. And the homeowners association could-
Well, I don't know why a homeowners association couldn't vote to fix it in Jackson. I don't know why that's-
If it's written pro.
Right.
And the only difference is, you don't have the statutory lien that the condo statute gives you. But that doesn't mean that you can't go to court and enforce it. You still have the rights to-
So, I think you're responsible for it. That's our concern.
Yeah.
Because if you've got 12 people, we're assuming that the vast majority of them are going to be mentally stable and complying with customary standards. So, if the aggregate is responsible for those actions of the individual, then, um, it would take a weight off of our shoulders.
Sure.
So, if Harry says, "I'm not testing my water, it tastes great," okay? We can turn around as, we go after the association, homeowners or condominium, and say, "Where's the 12 tests for this year?" Okay? We want them to be responsible, ultimately, to be the gatekeeper for the testing. And then they, they need to have some authority to go after John Hughes Citizen.
The testing is also required on their deed.
But beyond the testing, what if there's a failing and it's causing a problem with one of the other wells, which they're all so in close proximity? Who's, like, if I live in the house and I can't use my water and that, what's it?
If you have a failed septic system and the homeowner refuses to improve it, you could remove their occupancy permit. I mean, there, there are lots of ways to ensure that compliance happens. It's the same for any single-family house.
The compliance does not, the town does not want to take the compliance. That's the, that's the issue.
But you have single-family houses throughout the time.
That are on two acres of land.
This is, there's a big difference here.
I, I, I-
So, this is-
I'm going to guess that not every single, single-family house is on two acres of land.
Unless it was built before 1900, it may not be, okay? But there's 80,000 square feet you require for building in this town. And it's because we have septic and water. You know, we do the original recycling. We suck it out of the backyard and pump it into the front yard, okay? That's not true with this 12 houses on six acres, okay? It's a much smaller venue. And therein lies our concern.
Understood. However, you will run into situations where you have single-family homeowners who are doing things that they're not allowed to do throughout the town.
And that's why I stopped that here.
And the town does engage in enforcing, and that does occur.
But as a, as a single-family house, if they go into the building department, they get a, a building permit for a single-family house, they don't need a permit from this board. This project needs a permit from this board. This project is, there are waivers, these are small lots, there's, and, and the, the board does not want to be the enforcing agent.
We do not-
Nor should the board be the initial enforcing agency, but I, I don't think we should ignore the fact that those powers do exist.
Yeah, but if you want to be treated like all of the single-family homes in the rest of this town, then you should abide by the same bylaws, which means the two acres and the board of health and not ask for all the waivers.
That's just not how Chapter 40B works.
We-
Right. Well, Chapter 40B is- It isn't carte blanche, that you automatically get your waivers and you guys can walk away.
Yeah.
The board is allowed to impose conditions.
We feel a certain responsibility for the town-
And the neighbors.
-to lighten their load. And the neighbors, especially the neighbors, to lighten their load. We want to give them a go-to person. We don't want to have the board of health have to look and see, "Now, there's 12 houses down there, have we gotten certification from every one of them?" Okay? And if one is missing, now we have to go track down that one individual. We want to have-
The homeowners association is responsible for it.
Have them be responsible for it. And, and be able to go after them and maybe even empower them to do something about it. I don't know. See how creative you could be.
Well, the condo is-
But a condo, see, this is why we're so interested in the condo association.
If you could just put that to bed and let us write our reg school, we'll, uh-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
If you could just put the condo to bed, let us take our stab at the homeowners association and put the teeth in it as necessary, plus you guys get a chance to review it. If you have any other ways that you want to add more teeth to it, we've obviously agreed that we're happy to do that. The, uh, this word condo keeps coming back out.
Yeah, I don't think the board is waiving it at this point.
No.
We're, we're getting you everything you asked for.
We, we don't have it yet.
That's why. We, we, we just took a list. We sat here and took this list, and reviewed it twice, and we'll let you go out and do it.
Yes, Mr. Mina.
You know, if we're putting all the teeth in this to make it look like a condo association with a homeowners association, I mean, why are we trying to re-regulate what's already been put out there for what condos do? And there wouldn't be any question in court what their authority is. Here, you've got some off-the-law homeowners association, or some kind of rules that they want to put in place, which haven't been reviewed or aren't regulatory statutes, that somebody's going to have to force or enforce. I, I, we're going to put all the teeth, we're going to take the words out of condo and put them in homeowners. Why don't you just do the condo? That's what I'm saying.
Because they've already been told they can't build this by DEP, if it's a condo.
Oh. But now we're going to convolute it by saying, "We're not going to have condo, we're going to have homeowners, but it's going to be a condo." How do you move?
The Board of Disagreement has sympathy for your position, particularly myself. I haven't seen, and won't see a pro forma. I haven't seen anything from DEP saying they would even approve this configuration. Um, and we haven't seen what we've asked for for a couple of months, which is the ultimate, condo papers that will make the HOA, for all intents and purposes, a condominium association. Which question I ask, if it looks like a dog and barks like a dog, isn't it a dog? And could someone come along and say, "Well, yeah, it's a condo"?
No, because it's, a condo is, um, it's created in accordance with Chapter 183.
All right. Are you, yes?
Just, I'm-
Please stand.
Um, one question about the buffer, because I don't know what you might have included previously, but if, if you have that, that large area around the side as part of the homeowners association-
Would you care to come up and show us on the map?
Sorry. No, the, the strip that you're talking about, enclosing the space-
Okay, all around the exterior.
And just, is you were listing things that you wanted to be seen. Have you already mentioned that the homeowners association then would be responsible for, like, like buffer zones that are around other places, like for, you know, litter control out of it, and maintaining the plantings that I assume you're requiring as buffer zones between the different areas? And then, um, you know, if anything dies or whatever, that the homeowners association would be sure that that was done in, that they wouldn't allow them to store, you know, kind of blatant things that are in that zone?
Nothing can be on their property, except the, the trees that are used for screening. Yeah, that's what I'm hoping they'll come up with, okay? Um, that was our purpose in, in wanting to see that, because we were concerned about who's going to mow over those pipes and prevent trees from growing into the pipes, and who is going to maintain the screening, because the individual homeowners may not. Does anyone else have something they'd like to add? Well, I think it's obvious to me, we need to continue this meeting. Um, do you think you can have everything we need by next month?
Yeah. Here, yes. We'll have to work quickly on that one.
Well, I, I'm concerned about DEP, trust me, because that's, I have two-
Also, is it okay to, if we get it within a week before the hearing, so we have a time to look it over?
Yeah, we give everything out.
Actually, not quite, but, so we do need it.
When would the next hearing?
April.
The second Wednesday.
April.
That is, if we aren't in lockdown.
I have a little bit of concern.
Something to look forward to.
Which is something I wanted to ask you, Amy, what happens, um, but we can discuss that, basically about this whole virus thing, and if they say you can't have meetings or-
So, um, so our firm has reached out to, um, the governor's office, along with Secretary of State and the Attorney General. And the Secretary of State's office is filing special legislation regarding elections. Town meetings can be postponed, there is a statute of 3910A that allow it to be postponed for health and safety reasons. And so, with regard to any public meeting, we're waiting to hear back from either the AG or the governor, would have to file special legislation.
We have to, next month, a continuation of a hearing, uh, for, um, a special permit for a, um, long-term care facility type thing, down on River Road. We could not put enough chairs in this room when we were here last month, and they were out in the hallway. So, I'm concerned, given what the status is, is that something that you automatically postpone? I mean, not that there aren't enough people here tonight, but-
Madam Chair, I think we need to finish with this, and then we can go into a discussion and that's-
Fair enough.
And, and that, that would fall under the powers of the Board of Selectmen. That would fall under the power of the Board of Selectmen, as to what happens.
Okay. All right. You understand what we need, what we want. You got your list?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We continue this hearing until the next meeting on April 8th at-
Eight o'clock.
Eight PM?
Uh, six thirty, could you do six thirty now? We have a hearing, the continued hearing, starting at seven.
All right. Why don't we schedule this for six thirty?
Six thirty.
And if we stop the other one late, we stop the other one late. In fact, we might, is that okay with you, Amy?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made in second.
I'm at the SJC.
Danny.
Change the location, so we can take a room downstairs.
If, if you're going to change, wait, wait, if you're going to change the location, you have to, you have to continue at some time to leave certain locations. So, will you be changing the location? What are you saying, sir?
Well, I guess we can't change the location, because we didn't change it for the other hearing, the, the larger hearing. So, I guess we can't change it.
Okay. Then you go ahead, sorry.
All those in favor, aye? All those in opposed, no? All those standing, let me know.
All those in赞成.
Okay. Thank you. But that is a concern, Amy, if you could put-
So, uh, so that, that is, it would, the, um, the, the Board of Selectmen will, will be the ones to determine that, most likely on, um, I know, I'm sorry, Chris. Um, most likely on the advice of the state. The Commonwealth will have to, um, provide guidance to cities and towns. This is town meeting season, as you know.
Yeah.
And cities and towns need to designate their budget. So, there's a lot of issues. So, it's, it's very much, um, very much-
Top of the air, yeah.
Yes.
We'll be getting some email here in the next couple of weeks.
I just wanted to know, if we do, what do we have to do? Let's say we're coming to the meeting in April, and they say, "No congregating," okay? Then what?
Then you would not, then you wouldn't, you would not have the public, the public hearing. But what we're hoping for, is we're hoping for some special legislation that will indicate that these continued public hearings will not have any negative consequence on the town. So, for example, constructive approvals, things like that.
Right. In other words, if you're running out of time.
And then applicants don't have to refile and pay the filing, things like that.
And the posting.
Mm-hmm. But this is uncharted territory.
Yeah.
But you'll keep us informed.
So, two emails went out today, two email blasts went out today to all of our cities and towns, um, and one went out yesterday. So, pretty much you're going to be getting something daily, as far as, because everything's changing every day.
So, you'll keep us up to date, Chris?
Will do.
I go very well, yeah. Home arrest. I don't, I don't be here at the next meeting.
Oh, you won't?
No.
What are you going to be doing? Oh, you devil.
We're going to cruise.
I won't put anybody on the boat.
There won't be. So excited.
Um, last time, I think I was asking for more of those we needed to ask for.
I think I may have gotten that.
This is something, oh, this is something, oh. This is just what I'm going to say, because sometimes I don't get to say it. So, the only thing that we need to tell these people is which unit they need to use to figure out the discount. There's no need to figure out the calculation for them or anything. That's what my attorney has told me. All they're looking for is what unit they need to base the discount off of. And the trust has asked for the clarification as to which unit to base the fee off of. The trust has taken no position on which fee that should be used to base the fee off of. The trust has also not advocated at any meetings for any solutions to fix the issue that they created with the question. However, they refuse to implement your decision because there's no clarification. So, the master deed bases the condo fees on beneficial interest, which is tied to the square footage of the unit. To keep in accordance with the master deed and not disrupt anything, it makes sense to clarify that the market rate unit should be used when calculating the reduced 40B condo fees as a unit with the identical beneficial interest as the 40B unit's, or, to be even more accurate, should be based on the square footage of beneficial interest of the actual 40B unit itself. Because using this reference allows, as it should, for an increase in the 40B unit's fees if a 40B unit owner ever upgrades their unit and adds square footage by redoing their basement. Both the condo trust and I are asking the zoning board to send a clarifying letter or decision to all the parties, so that Whitney Estates condo trust will implement the reduced rate structure. I would like to propose that we do not open the original decision to rectify this, but rather issue a more referential explanation, meaning, rather than restating the original decision with new verbiage, that the ZBA simply enter a decision that directly answers the question at hand, possibly stating something like, "The zoning, the decision is a clarification of the zoning board's January 28th, 2020 decision regarding the reduction in fees at Whitney Estates. The Whitney condo trust has questioned which market rate unit to base the 40B discounted fee off of, and the zoning board has decided that that should be based off of a market rate unit with identical beneficial interest or the 40B's actual unit." The latter is preferential because of what I stated earlier about upgrading. But in addition, if Whitney Estates ever does their due diligence and updates their master deed to reflect the actual square footage of the market rate units as they've all been upgraded, there may not ever be a unit with the identical square footage, except for the 40B unit. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. I, I don't think there would be anything wrong in responding to, um, the, I responded to their counsel. I responded to their counsel. Do they still have the same counsel?
I can't believe so, yeah.
We'd have to check.
Matt Gaines.
I don't know. But I responded to counsel telling him, when he asked, they didn't know how to apply it. He kept referring to...
Oh, I remember the letter, yeah.
You know, he kept referring to, "So long as there's no appeal, so long as there's no appeal, so long as there's no appeal." I would have no problem with having the board to vote consensus that it was our intent.
Yes.
Uh, let's see, how do we wanna put this? Intent to have the application. If someone has got a wording, please speak up. Of the...
Square footage of the...
Condos. I'm misspelling everything. Application of the condos. Now, we're saying to the square footage. Let's think this through. Well, it can be one or the other.
No, they're the same. The square footage figures out your beneficial interest. So, if I upgrade my unit and make it better...
That's what they went to.
Right.
They, that wasn't what it was originally.
Because they did it wrong.
Right.
Like everything else.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. For 18 years, you paid 70%.
Right.
Of what?
Of whatever they figured out in their head.
Do you have records of that? I mean, just go back to that.
Yeah, I provided them all multiple times. I provided them...
No, I just saw the new one that had them all even.
What we did, when we, when we modified the comprehensive permit, is we said that it would be 80% of that, of the market value units, okay? The question that their lawyer had, rather than figuring it out on his own, which he could have, came back and said, "Well, we don't know how to figure it because..."
Well, that's where I get confused because for 18 years, they did know how to figure it.
But they changed the method of figuring it.
They were charging all the market rate units the same price for 18 years and discounting 70% of the 40Bs. They weren't calculating the market rate fees by beneficial interest, so the higher sized units were paying more. When they finally disrupted the whole thing and changed it so the market rate fees and the 40B fees were the same, that's when they...
Based the whole thing by the percentage.
Decided to do the right way because the lawyer told them they were doing it wrong and they didn't believe me for 18 years. But, I mean, I could go on for days, but that's not...
And what they...
If you were there, the whole situation is they, they just need to know what unit to base it on. That's all they need to know.
And there isn't one the same square footage?
There is right now. But if they up, if they change the master deed to what they currently really are, which they don't wanna do because they don't wanna pay more. But if they did change the deeds to what they really were, it could very well not be one that's identical. That's why I'm stating that it should always be on the 40B unit's square footage of beneficial interest because if I upgrade, my fee should go up. And if you base it on someone else's unit and I upgrade, my fee doesn't change.
Well, is it something you could review? In other words, today, you, there's a unit with your same square fee, correct?
Right now, there's five.
Oh, there's five identical?
Yes. Three market rate and two 40Bs are all the same. But in reality, they're not. They're on paper right now the same.
If you wanna know how ridiculous it is, okay. Five of them are at like...
9.76.
6.7. And I think four of them are at 9.76.
Yeah, which is like...
And then one of them is at 12 point something.
Right.
I mean, 12.
Yeah, really.
You know what I'm saying?
And none of them match with the assessor's offices.
Yeah, and this one unit that's 12 square feet, it's because when the units were built, she finished, or he finished off their basement. So, that was taken into account. Now, she, or he might go to the assessors and say, "It's subterranean. Are you counting it?" But that's for another letter. But again, what we did was we said it had to be 70% of that charge to the market value. Okay? And what I'd like to do is make it least market value or if no comparison, I mean, I wanna cover all the bases here, okay?
Don't wanna be written on the letter.
I do not. Least market value.
They would, find a way.
Or if no comparable, based on square, uh, based on, what did you call it?
Based on the 40B's unit, the 40B unit. Beneficial interest in square footage.
Well, she's been at this for a while.
For a long time. And I've spent 18 years fighting these people. I put in an air conditioner and they sent me a letter saying they were gonna rip it out because I'm a 40B unit owner.
They didn't watch you.
I'm just saying, it's one thing after another.
Okay.
I would think that...
Okay, so what I'm looking for is for someone...
Can you read it? Lynn, could you read it?
That I send a letter to counsel and all of the members at Whitney Estates. I have all their addresses. I've told them before. That it was the board's intent, okay, to have the application of the condo fees to the square foot... All right, we gotta do this again. To condos, to the square footage beneficial interest. Is that what you wanna say?
Of the 40B unit itself.
And this also affects the other unit, right, the 40B unit?
Yes.
Even though she hasn't done anything. But... No, she helped them throw me off the board of trustees.
You're on camera.
Yeah. It's all true.
It was our intent to have the application of the condo fees for the affordable units.
To be based on?
To be based on the square footage slash beneficial interest of the unit itself.
We gotta put the 40B in there.
40B unit itself.
Just don't say, "Well, which unit itself?"
Of the affordable unit itself. Okay, now, let's think through if there's any other convolusion that these people could create. Well, let's include the yard. And again, it's 70%, right? I'll put the 70% in here. Did you go to housing?
I, I went to Ellen Way. She's my go-to person. She said to go here when I asked to go housing, was that they could help.
Now, these people have communicated with you because I don't wanna be throwing, getting up against the wall here. Did they agree? Did they tell you, "Well, we'll change it as soon as..."
My lawyer has spoken with their lawyer and apparently their lawyer is only waiting for the unit that they're supposed to base it off.
Now, I sent letters to all of them and invited them to the last.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They have no position on this. They're not even trying to...
No, no, we were gonna discuss the, the letter from the lawyer about the percentage.
Right, but they obviously...
And nobody showed up. The lawyer didn't show up and they didn't show up.
They're only doing this to make it difficult for me.
So, we have a, we have a vote of consensus that it was our intent to have the application of the condo fees to be based upon the beneficial interest slash square footage of the affordable unit itself.
That should cure it.
Is there any way they can misconstrue that?
I didn't see that they could misconstrue the last one.
If you have any questions, please attend our April meeting.
Thank you, that'd be, yes. Perfect.
Perfect.
You got a problem.
Yep. Sounds lovely, Lynn. Thank you.
So, is this something that we'll have to wait, that 20-day thing?
No. This is not a decision. This is just...
You don't understand the anxiety I had for those days. And it was more than 20 because weekends were in there.
So, you...
Yeah.
Did you know that they did...
Oh, yes.
Send in an appeal?
A well-written appeal. I really wasn't that concerned about the appeal on this.
Unfortunately, they will wait and to the wrong person.
And if they can't get that right, there's no way they get an actual appeal right.
I, you know, I mean, it was interesting. Okay.
Well, I appreciate you guys helping me and I'm sorry to be...
You will, I'll have, if you can, I'll make out envelopes. I'll send you the verbiage in an email. You can maybe put it on that cute Berlin paper. Okay? And I'll just say that tonight we voted, we voted consensus that it was our intent. I don't even wanna show it as an actual vote. They're just asking that this is what our intent was when we put that in there, was it not? All right, so, did I entertain a motion?
Still moves.
You're a second, okay. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So, I will try to do this in the next couple of days.
Thank you very much.
You will get a letter in the mail because you have that mailing list, don't you?
Well, I have copies of all your letters that you sent previously, so...
Okay, so you, can I get you to make out the envelopes? You just seen me down here one day, Friday, Chris. Life without Leanne is not fun. So, we'll do that and you can let, give Leanne a call and let her know how you make out. I'd like to know if they start doing it.
Well, I'm probably gonna have to go to all kinds of sports to get back February and March, but...
I'd love to see that phone.
Yeah, I should see my dad. It's not the only case. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Becky. Say hi to your dad for me.
I will. Thank you. Have a good weekend.
Just seems like dead folks.
This hasn't even been opened.
I know.
Crack open those boxes.
I was thankful it hasn't been opened, although I didn't even want it. These are European.
Okay, so we're done with kids of Berlin. We're done with Whitney. Approval of the amendment to the master deed for Sawyer Hill condominium.
Yeah, Amy asked to put this, and now she's left, to put this on the agenda and she supplied the document. I guess the board needs to sign it.
Okay.
Should we read it?
Should we pass it to Lynn?
All right, my...
Pass it to Lynn. I'll read to her.
I don't know why she left then.
She wanted to get out of here.
Do you have a phone number?
I have it in my email someplace.
Look at how they're holding together.
Okay, we have creamy chocolate, coffee and almond, hazelnut, hazelnut cream. You wanna coffee? Coffee and cream.
Well, what I'm looking for is...
Coffee and cream, coffee and cream.
I can't compete with coffee.
Coffee and cream.
Don't you want to?
No, I don't want that.
You don't wanna...
Is there an almond or something?
We have, yeah, we have a hazelnut almond.
Ooh, I'll make that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Hazelnut almond.
Thank you.
Hazelnut for you too?
Yes.
But you're losing our interest. We gotta compete with this stuff.
I'm gonna put this back in the waste spot here.
Oh, are the red lights going on?
There you go.
Lynn, say goodbye to Chris.
Bye.
Bye, Chris.
Thank you.
Oh, you're leaving early, are you?
Would you like a chocolate?
Want chocolate?
Yeah, come get a chocolate.
Hazelnut almond.
Good.
Put it at the end of the table, she's...
I just got coffee and cream. They are good.
Mercy.
I don't think she wants us to...
You're all signers.
I think what this is, is for the Sawyer Hill condominium trust to sign.
Oh, she just wrote the document out?
You see, we have all our...
Right, that's the decision on the fact.
Right. And what this is, amendment to the master deed. I think this is for the...
Well, she asked me to put on the agenda approval of the amendment of the master deed. So, I guess the board needs to approve that. I, I don't really know. That's what her message stated.
Okay.
She signed it.
Oh, wow, that does smell coffee.
Oh, okay, here we go.
Back at ya.
Not that I wanna buy one. I just wanna read all the flavors. That looked interesting.
Okay, this, this is, yeah, motion made. She just took Third Amendment to findings and decision. This is the amendment here. Okay? And it lists, basically, I think she went through your minutes, Leanne. And then... Okay, Leanne?
Taking it away.
Where are you going?
I want, I want you to take a second look at that or somebody to take a second look at that.
It needs to be dated.
You should have given them two.
Well, you can come up and get the next one every once in a while.
Do you see what I mean?
Yeah, totally. Yes, too.
So...
Tell us your opinion.
I'm looking that the only signatures that are needed on there are...
Sawyer Hill.
Right, the two, the primary and secondary condominium association.
And then it has to be filed.
And then that's for filing.
Yeah, it says right here, primary condominium trustees.
Right.
I'll go for the basis.
But what Amy asked me to put on the agenda was board's approval of the amendment.
Oh, so we have to read it.
Turn over to the last page. Turn the whole thing over.
Yeah.
Turn it over.
I'll have her soon approve the decision. Assign the decision.
Hey, my name's got on here.
There you go.
I can't do this one.
So, you guys take a look and see if you think what you think of it.
Oh, that is coffee.
I think what we need to do is if you would, call or drop her a note in the morning and say that, wow, she left us stranded.
Yep.
We, we looked at the document. We've signed it, okay? And it appears to us that it's just the condo associations that need to sign it so it can be filed.
Right. So, you're, but I guess what she's asking or saying was the board needs to approve that before, I guess, it's sent to them to sign and file. She wanted the board's approval of that document.
So, we just want to... So we just want a motion to make a legal-
So we need a motion in a second.
Yeah, give them a chance. Formal approval or an informal approval?
We'll do a formal.
It wouldn't hurt.
Motion to approve the adjustments to their comprehensive permit. Oh, I can't do this.
No, I will.
Okay.
Okay, so go for it.
A motion made to, for the approval of the amendment to the master deed of Sawyer Hill condominiums.
Is there a second?
Thank God.
Who's voting on this?
Yeah.
It's on the, whoever signed the decision.
Whoever signed it.
The five primaries. Actually, no, actually, no.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
I'll get the names.
All those opposed? And well, she can just take, who's on there? Is everybody here that's talking?
You?
Yes.
Lynn, Dennis, Ginny, myself, and Keith.
I think we can check it off.
All right, so you voted your approval and I'll, I'll connect it to me and figure out what I do with it.
Okay, just as an explanation. What we approved was a modification to their comprehensive permit.
Right.
So what she's asking for is actual approval of a document that modifies the deed that now complies with the modification to the original permit.
So we did that. Now you need to ask her what you need to do with it. Or I might tell them.
I can do that.
Okay, board members' signatures on code of conduct and ethics.
Yeah, I didn't copy it for everybody. I sent it to everybody electronically and I can send it out again, but you need to read this and sign it and return it to the board of selectmen.
Okay.
So I'll just resend it electronically tomorrow.
So do we want to put that as an item?
Please. I, I had no, I couldn't get email today. I don't know if my, I have it to the spectrum.
Why don't we have-
Do they need hard copy or clean?
You bring just enough signature pages for the last page.
Well, we can go copy it right now if people wanna, I mean, I only have the original because I didn't want to waste paper and ink. But if you, and anybody who wants to read it over, or I can send it to you via email and you can sign tonight and then read it tomorrow.
We'll just sign. I don't even have it.
I think that'll work.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, I'll sign one of those.
Okay.
And you keep one and then you give one to whom have a, just please keep copies because sometimes they come back two years later and say, you never did this.
Yeah, okay.
We have a discussion. Was anybody planning to go to the citizen-
They canceled it all.
Yes, I know. That's what we were gonna say here tonight. Did anybody sign up for it?
They never sent out any kind of information.
Yeah, they didn't say it was open. I was waiting. I would've gone, but-
Wasn't waiting. They never, I don't think they ever got around to it.
Well, I had it on the agenda. I had, Leanne put it on the agenda when it came out, okay?
But they never followed up with classes?
They were online and everything. In fact, I asked her to print the brochure, right, Leanne, for tonight?
Yeah.
So people could look at it.
Yeah, they put, yeah, I don't think they had opened up registration, but they had supplied what they were offering. But yes, now it's all been canceled.
Yeah. And the reason it's been canceled is not so much because of them, but Holy Cross won't hold any large gatherings.
Yep.
The men.
Yep.
Cancelled.
Discussion of proposed form to promote sharing of information among the towns boards. Did we see that?
Yeah, well, Keith did. He had a nice comment.
I didn't know you actually read my emails.
Of course I do.
What was the comment?
I don't think it's necessary personally.
Must've been what I knew you did.
Did you see my response?
I liked your response and I agree with you 100%. Although I can tell you, I've been sitting on other boards and they all seem in favor of it. They like it, so. I don't think it does any harm. Peter is very happy with his thing, but, you know.
We can't do it, though.
Okay.
If you-
Yeah.
What do you mean, we can't do it?
Well, he wants a form that anytime you contact, do you have a copy of the form here?
I know it's a four day, so I'm just, why can't we do it?
Well, if someone comes in and it's basically gonna go through the town clerk and they fill out this form and it says to, in the name of the board of committee or town clerk if uncertain, because the town clerk's supposed to forward it. And the contact, name, date, Ria, description in one sentence, and description of project. So someone comes in and they take this form and they say, I want a special permit for a home-based contracting business. And they put it on here. Is that unnoticed to have a hearing?
No.
Why not? They think it's the application.
Well, they're wrong. We have a form they fill out for a special permit.
This says applicant proponent, so it's an application.
But I don't-
All right, so it has a bad title.
Well, I don't personally think that everybody wants to know every time someone wants to move their garage or-
Well, I agree with that. I'm just saying, but that doesn't mean it ever used it.
Okay, the next thing is, all of this stuff is up on the website. When we post a hearing for condominiums or whatever, it's all up there, right?
But nobody looks-
Do you think anybody looked at that?
So I think this came up because of the whole residential care facility on River Road because something got on Facebook or whatever and then Peter was like, I didn't know anything about this. How come I wasn't informed?
It's in the newspapers.
Right, but I think he's looking for all the appropriate boards to-
Well, I could see why he would be interested in that because that's a revenue-producing thing or whatever. But I don't think he wants to know when Harry wants to enlarge his garage.
Right.
So, he's only interested in the major things. We post them all.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that really-
They have to do their due diligence.
The planning board just needs to do a better job of communicating with the EDC in my mind because everything that Peter's worried about goes through the planning board or the, or the conservation committee.
Absolutely, or the board of health.
Or the board of health. But we mentioned it to the conservation committee and they sort of felt that there's a lot of stuff going on that they didn't know about as well. And so they thought, it's not gonna hurt, you know, you're right. The minutia at our level, they're not interested in. They're talking about big initiatives. So, no one's gonna police this. No one's gonna enforce it.
Although, the conservation commission might be interested in something that we consider very small. Someone wants to enlarge a garage and they're within 100 feet of a wetlands, they wanna know about that.
But don't, but right now-
Is it their due diligence to look at the zoning board on the, to my town government and look at what's on the agenda and say, oh, we should be there?
Or in their inbox. Because we sent copies of everything to all these people. Now, one of the things, does the EDC have a box?
I have no idea.
Oh, you should've asked him while I was down there.
Yeah, they do. It would be one of the ones up on top that was added after the vote.
All I'm thinking is, not the whole thing and all the plans and so forth and so on, but maybe the face sheet of any major project. We could stick in the bin.
I don't, yeah.
Just, so if they just got the first page, now they can go looking.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? And the plans are around, they're always in the town clerk's office and everything, but I'm saying, if the face sheet says, Harry Jones and I want to enlarge my garage, they say wastebasket, thank you, okay? So they just get the first page of every request for permit. If it's going to the planning board and they say, we wanna discuss, I don't know, the incline of some whatever, okay? They don't care. But if somebody wants to build a subdivision, they do. So just the first page, the application, goes in their bin and they know that somebody's applying for a 58 unit. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If that would make them happy.
Honestly, I read that form and it confused me. I wasn't, it was, it was too big.
Yeah, and I read it more, instead of an applicant filling it out, it would be the board. Like, I would fill it out and send it to them, letting them know what was coming up at our-
I think that's what he's imagining.
Did anybody not see my response? That's what I wrote back to.
Well, I mean-
It's an advocate, too.
Personally, I think the whole thing is kinda hokey.
Do the hokey pokey.
Why don't we have a, it's 2020. Why don't we have a town website that is-
We do.
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
Why don't we have a town website that is closed to only board members and employees of the town? An intranet where you can post information up there and other people can, from other boards can view it and discuss it
and give their input on it. We gotta be open to-
Or just be aware, made aware of it.
No, no, it's illegal because-
It's an open meeting law.
No, it's not a meeting.
Oh.
No, no, if you, if you start emailing back and forth-
Emails aren't considered meetings. Telephone calls-
Is that distribution basket down there considered an open meeting?
No, because-
What difference does it make whether I scan this in and post it on a website or I stick it in their inbox?
Because it's-
If you put it on your website and you're having a discussion.
Right.
Well, discussion is different. But, yeah, I'm involved with three boards and all three boards communicate wildly differently. It's maddening for me to try to remember which one I can reply to an email and which one I can't. So, I get that we're looked at a little bit. No one's gonna be suing the EDC for anything, right? You know, but someone could, in theory, be monitoring our emails. So I understand why we have to do things differently.
Well, it never happens until something pops up and you go to court and they say, I want everybody's email, okay? So, if any of the boards, and I would say any duly-appointed board, even the EDC, you have to post your meetings, right? You have to keep minutes, right? If you have to post meetings and you have to keep minutes, then if there's communication among the majority of you, or whatever constitutes a quorum, okay? It's email, it's telephone, and it doesn't even have to be one call where you're all on it. I call you, you call her, she calls you, okay? That's a violation of the open meeting law. And it doesn't matter if you're a select person or a member of the zoning board of appeals, planning board, whatever. That's why only two of us can go like to any of the other meetings that are happening. Do you know what I mean? Okay.
I mean, Lynn, if you just, if you, if you just let Peter know when, when something comes along, I think he'll be happy, I guess.
Well, you're, you're on both boards.
I did tell him that 180 was coming. He was, that's how he found out he was coming.
Oh, good, that's why you should be there.
He wants to hear it from you guys.
Okay. Well, why don't we do it this way? If we come up with anything that you said Peter would wanna know, I'll send him a go.
Okay. Well, I know.
Is the whole intent of this just to notify Peter?
Yeah, pretty much.
So, so we don't have to notify any other board of anything going on? We just need to notify the EDC?
The other boards are all, no, they always get notified. We always tell conservation-
They don't. That's the problem.
I don't, I mean, I've never, I personally haven't seen-
These, these boards, well, I just, not to, to pick on anybody, but we send the conservation commission stuff all the time and we never hear back from them.
Really?
Do they get it? Do they care? I mean-
The only thing I see is the planning board sees a lot more stuff than everybody else does.
They do.
They don't communicate at all.
At all.
Yeah, so that's the only one that I see. I've sat in a lot of planning board meetings and, and I don't see it anywhere else. But I've never been to conservation and learned something that I didn't already see from ZBA and vice versa.
But I think everybody on all these boards just anticipates that everybody else in town is reading their public notices and reading their meeting minutes. Half the boards don't even publish meeting minutes. Some don't publish them for six or eight months at a time. But I think they're just assuming that everybody else is aware of what they're doing and nobody really knows what the other boards are doing. Now, in our case, I don't think it really matters that much. Somebody comes in and applies for a variance.
Do you really care if they're gonna add a bedroom, you know?
Well, not so much that, but, you know, do we care if the conservation commission is doing something on the other end of town?
No.
They're not applying, nobody's applying for a variance there. We don't care. So we only care about the ones that actually, you know, fill out the formal paperwork, but, you know.
Well, I agree with you that maybe there's a way, but I think using that form, at least for this board, is dangerous. Do you folks see what I mean?
Yeah.
It looks like an application. Somebody may say, yeah, or I wanna do this and this and this and give it to-
But I don't think this would go out to Joe Public. Like, this would sit with me and I would fill out ZBA to, no, to Peter Hoffman from the ZBA, the date, and what, what is coming before the board that he, he might be interested in.
But the person that fills that out thinks that's their application?
No, I'm saying I would fill it out or someone from the board. This is not available to Joe Public.
No.
Internal documents.
It's internal, right. Only forget about it in a couple of days.
I don't know.
He might be able to tell me and he'll know.
It just seemed to me it's kinda silly to only notify Peter Hoffman. I mean- Informant anybody else in town.
The agendas are-
Then Peter Hoffman knows, great. You have the boards that might be-
Well, for example, has anybody looked out on the website to see when the planning board is holding their hearing on changes that they're making to the zoning bylaw?
Nope.
And it, I would say about six of them affect us.
Usually they inform us. Usually they send a group email. We know what's going on.
I saw it on the board of selectmen's agenda for I think their March 23 meeting.
Right.
So you'd have to look at the agendas, which I do. I'll say, oh, I wonder what the board of selectmen is discussing tonight and I look at the agenda, so. Peter Hoffman, but not, I guess, maybe not all boards are-
But the way everything is set up right now, if I go to the Town of Berlin Facebook page, nothing should, well, today's meetings on the schedule show up on your calendar. There's no agendas or anything else there. It's just, ZBA's having a meeting tonight, it's, you know, 6:30. If I go to the Town of Berlin website, the same thing. It gives me the month and it'll tell me, or I think you can click on it either for the week or the month.
Right.
And it'll tell you what meetings are happening.
Right.
Again, no agendas, no-
Right, you have to go to the my town government site.
Yeah, which isn't linked to anywhere anymore on the new website.
But it is, though. If you go to, if you go to the department and you click down, you can see the agendas.
I think you can even request they send you their agenda. Can you not?
Sure. But the problem is, now like with the planning board, a lot of the time, we don't care. They're gonna be doing a subdivision over here or they're gonna take a look there, so whatever they're doing. But we would care about them making changes to the zoning bylaw. We'd like to take a look at it, see how it might affect us. And there are several that are going to, okay? How would that communication happen? Nobody's applying for anything.
Yeah, it wouldn't.
Well, I think that's what the supposed form would do.
No, who's the applicant?
It's not applicant. That's a poor choice of word, like-
It's internal.
It, this is an internal document. So it would be-
Department head.
It would be whatever board sending it to the ZBA.
I don't think, I don't think that is what Mr. Hoffman was expecting. At the top, the applicant, okay, is whoever's gonna build this mosque or church or whatever, okay? And then it was gonna go to the ZBA, the planning board, based upon who would be the person to act upon it.
Okay.
Which is why I'm concerned that it looks like an application.
Yeah, so it needs to be-
Because they're gonna be giving it to the town clerk. And it's got nothing that, you know, is needed, but to drag it out-
Draft reject. It could say regarding an application from blah blah.
Yeah, it just, it needs to be an internal document.
It just needs to be cleaned up, the, clean it up a little bit.
I think Mr. Hoffman, Hoffman's done very, something very great.
Yeah, technically.
He put you on the EDC, well, the selectmen did, but he's on the economic development committee and he's on our board, so you know, and I mean, he can-
Everything, the communication is all in.
So all of this could be resolved if Peter Hoffman was just required to attend to every meeting that every town has.
There you go.
And he could. It doesn't have to be a cost. He can, he can be here.
So, I think if we could come up with, there you, I mean, you're into this sort of business, okay? Why don't you design something that would help us as far as an add-on to our website? Why don't you design something that would help us as far as an add-on to a website?
Do you have to stay for all this? Yeah.
Let them go.
Give them another chocolate, at least.
Application. No, I'm hoping Mr. Hoffman will watch this.
Wait a minute, now, how come, I can go, I can go right here, I can go to, I can go to upcoming meeting, no, I go to minutes and agendas.
Yes.
And there's a huge list of upcoming meetings, everybody's got an agenda. Everybody's got an agenda, anyway, but...
I know, it's really...
It's all here. There you go.
Okay, why don't we approve the past meeting minutes and sign any warrants? We can end up a journey, and then...
I need to approve the past minutes.
What's the matter?
January 8th and February...
So you're, you're, all three sets you're making a motion on?
Yep.
Seconded?
Second. What am I, so, geez? Chopping it in here?
All those, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimously voted. Okay.
I have, I have a...
But did we close the meeting yet?
We haven't done yet.
I have a request for $21 from Sue Roberts for a sign.
Okay, okay.
Up there, and I have Leanne's pay of $336.75, which leaves us a balance of $302.97 for the rest of the year.
Okey dokey.
Wow.
Which we won't make it.
So we don't, all we need to do is know, and we don't need to vote on it, he's got the same answer, but they mentioned in the minutes, then he brought it to our attention that he did those two things.
Yep.
So that he's covered.
Yep.
Okay, do we have anything else to discuss?
So if our, if our meeting is too crowded next week, we can't...
Let me grab my...
Next week?
Next month, next month.
Oh, my God.
The building inspector needs to give a room, like, what the total count is for this room. He can't, and we can't assess that quickly, because we were way over capacity in this room.
Never mind.
I think we were, but we don't know.
Right.
In fact, to be perfectly honest with you, I think it's the fire chief that makes that decision, and I think he should probably post the total number of bodies that can be in any of the rooms, okay?
So do we have to go downstairs, do we relocate to downstairs, or... See, that's the question, what happens?
Maybe you couldn't without posting it.
I mean, if what you got here...
What if there was a leak in the ceiling, we'd have to move to a different room, anyway?
We signed up for it.
You know, years ago, when she said we can't change the room, because...
No, no, we can't, but we have to come here, okay? And we'll probably have to leave on breadcrumbs or something.
Somebody wrote on the door saying, "Relocated."
And then we can relocate it to another room if it's not big enough. I just don't know what room is going to be big enough.
Do you remember many years ago, when we used to have meetings upstairs in the old town hall? And I remember that we filled upstairs, and we had to go downstairs. And did they have a TV or an intercom?
TV and a microphone.
So do we still have that? Could we get that?
I don't know.
I thought we adjourned the meeting, shut that thing off.
Did we adjourn?
We have not.
We did not adjourn.
No, we have not.
I'll make a, yeah, did you, okay, is there a second?
Did we adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Now we're adjourned.